Divisions two to five of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And, uh, Madam Clerk, I do note the presence of a quorum as a matter of fact, a full house.
Confirm the presence of the quorum.
And, uh, we have had an agenda circulated. Are there any questions or changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Uh, we'll move on to approval of minutes from the prior meeting. So, uh, those minutes were circulated for the November fourth meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Okay, hearing none. The minutes passed. Uh, next is presentations and public comment. Uh, I see Mr. Parrish is on the agenda. Would you care to address counsel?
My name is Kevin Parrish, resident of Glendale, one seventy-six Washington Avenue. Uh, first of all, let me apologize to David, our court administrator, for comments of, uh, you being a liar. For the record, David was not here during the time of the Phase One sanitary sewer, uh, project. So, the comments he made was in reference to what he was told about that project. Uh, I have to excuse him. It's taken at as fact. It was not fact. Uh, he said that on September ninth meeting, in addressing me and this issue of Phase One sanitary sewer project, that, uh, the Instriform Company, or the Teleback Company, um, did a procedure. Well, the Teleback Company was the company who told Village of Glendale that the Cold Avenue Street pipes were a hundred percent blocked before they made the determination on the project that that street would be pipe replacement. I don't believe that they would later on try to do any technique other than replace those pipes at a hundred percent block. Since I was confused about that, uh, I, I called the Teleback, uh, environmental company and, um, got some, uh, clarification of what they do. I talked with the project manager of Stormwater, uh, Division, and he clarified that they did not do that type of work. But not only that, I had presented that, the company that does do that type of work, which I brought pictures to you guys, was the Donley Company. Pictures of their company. They are a concrete cutting and drilling company. And, uh, they were the ones, in fact, that did that type of work. I talked with, uh, a person that had twenty years' experience at that company. His name was Jake, uh, to get clarification. But, for the record, I'd like to state that I put in several public records requests. Dave, uh, addressed them, and, uh, I was able to view the physical files because my requests were replied to as ambiguous. One of the requests that I asked for was the completion report, um, which I, uh, addressed from the Ohio Public Works Commission. They received a copy of. So, and getting into these public files, uh, which we have history with the Court of Claims about whether or not public records are going to be available or not. I did not see, not only, uh, the report that Dave said that, uh, he read, but I didn't see, uh, the work that was supposed to be done, uh, by this company. Uh, I didn't see that the Instriform Company, which was supposed to do this work, as for the record, the agreement that was signed on the third day of October twenty seventeen by the Village of Glendale, the Instriform Company, that stated that the contractor agrees to perform all of the work as described in the contract documents. Didn't see those reports regarding that because when I got into the, uh, pre and post inspections, the Instriform Company did not do the work on Cold Avenue.
You have about a minute.
I was surprised that the most important and damaged street, that they did not do it, but there was no report on it. So, it, it completely surprised me of that, but that does not surprise me. We have many instances of missed documents and many instances of me, uh, asking questions to this village about, um, this project. Now, I'm in the process of resubmitting to the court, uh, the Court of Claims went all the way to this district court because of my claims. That was because they had never seen in a federal court a public records document case come this far. I dismiss that because I did not want to discredit and embarrass this, this community with the lunacy that they present in losing public records on a consistent basis, especially surrounding this project. But I will resubmit that.
Okay.
And letting you guys know that I'm not trying to destroy this community, but I am in search of the truth.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Is there anyone else? I don't see anyone else who wishes to address counsel. Hearing none. We'll move on to, uh, the reports. Um, so the report from, uh, the mayor, the first report we'll look at today, um, there were no deaths reported in the village, or no births reported in the village. There was one death reported. Uh, that was Mary Agnes Carrier. Mary Agnes was a lifelong resident here. She passed, uh, November the seventh at the age of eighty-four. So, for her, can we have a moment of silence, please? May she rest in peace. Um, other things to report, um, in November, uh, the, uh, First Presbyterian Church held an annual Thanksgiving box program, and I think the police helped out with that, and it was very successful. Um, our fire department had their pancake breakfast. I think we'll hear more about that in the fire committee report. I happen to be out of town, but I understand it went well. Um, Glendale Elementary held a Veterans Day lunch, and that was on November twenty-sixth. It was a little bit past Veterans Day, but it was attended by some of our local veterans, and, uh, it was a, a really nice, uh, luncheon that they had. Um, for December, um, there is a Glendale holiday decorating contest. This has been going on since nineteen thirty-eight. Uh, the Glendale Garden Crafters started it. They have assistance this year from the Village Gardeners of Glendale and the Glendale Garden Club. Um, look at your Friday newsletter for more detail about it, but the judging is December sixth, sixteenth at night, and the daytime judging is the seventeenth. Christ Church will present on December sixth at six-thirty cocktails and confections for critters, which is a benefit for West Wildlife Rehab. December seventh, Christ Church will have a reading at the Polar Express from ten until noon, and, uh, a train display and treats, so that will be a nice, uh, morning activity for kids and families. The village is taking a water service line inventory. I think everybody's received a flyer for that. You can do a self-test, self-assessment if you would do that, and then send back into the office your results of your water main coming into your house. Uh, the community library is seeking volunteers to help. There's more detail in the Friday newsletter about that. And then, um, December eleventh, the Community of the Transfiguration has a Christmas card writing, um, timeframe from ten until two P.M. You can call, make reservations, and sit in one of their nice rooms and look out at the beautiful landscape that they have and write your Christmas cards. Uh, finally, a, a big event for the village. The Village Christmas is coming back to the village. It's been at HWB for a couple of years, so it will be in the village square this year. Um, HWB is working on it with Sherry Conley, who's done this for, I think, the last fifteen or twenty years. Long time.
And it's the fourteenth?
Uh, December fourteenth, yes. Um, there will be, um, carriage rides. Santa Claus will be at GHP. Um, there'll be live music and refreshments, uh, and there'll be a, uh, a performance by the Village Carolers, who are some of our local residents, who will be singing Christmas carols, uh, in between sets of the two live bands. So, it should be a very nice time. And that's it for the mayor's report. Uh, David, could you give us the administration?
Certainly, Mayor. Thank you. Um, I circulated a copy of the report, uh, earlier today. I'll go through it very quickly. Twenty-twenty-five budget is before counsel this evening. We got through, uh, one finance committee meeting for, I think, the third year in a row, so hopefully we keep that trend going. And a full published, uh, budget book will be circulated either the end of this week or early next, uh, for the, the public to better understand the pieces and parts of the village's budget. Um, the, I won't steal all of Becky's thunder here, but there is one piece that I want to mention about the twenty-twenty-three audit. Um, as everyone's aware, we did get through the audit with no, uh, material findings, which is fantastic news. First time that's happened in twenty-five years. Um, the other piece worth mentioning that wasn't part of, um, the documentation circulated originally was that we have, we've been designated as a four-star, um, public records community. Um, the auditor reviews best practices for public records management and, uh, records response, and the village has implemented five or more of the auditor's best practices. Um, in their words, "We are at the highest achievement of open and transparent government." So, it is a tremendous improvement from years past, and I'm very proud of that, that we, uh, we maintain that level. The water main replacement project is likely going to be beginning work in late December or early January. Hydrant replacements will be beginning at about that same time. Uh, again, that's Forest Fountain and Ivy, and then Albion in the summer of twenty-twenty-five. The residents that'll be affected will be getting direct mail notices with, uh, more information about when construction schedules are, are going to be in place and what to expect and all that kind of stuff. Um, and I'll repeat what the mayor said, that if you haven't yet tested your line, please do so and, and let us know in the office. If you need help, feel free to give us a call. We'll walk you through it. Um, and then finally, very quickly, the Strategic Plan Steering Committee met in November, reviewed a current draft of the full plan. Um, once that's finalized, we'll be posting it for public comment and then collecting those comments, and then the final version of the plan will be provided to counsel for their review and approval. And, um, we will begin exercising it as a, a document for the next five to ten years in the village. So unless there are any questions, that concludes, yes?
Um, is, is there a plan or timing for the replacement of hydrants on streets where we aren't replacing the mains? In other words, the, the streets that, that exist now that aren't going to be ripped up? Is there a plan for replacing the old?
So, there will be two crews working. There will be the crew that's actually doing the water main replacements, and then a crew that's doing hydrant work. Right.
Great.
So, um, firm timelines. I don't have exact, like, dates yet, but that work will be beginning at about the same time. So, end of this month, early next month.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
Great. Thank you, David, and, and, uh, congratulations on that good report about the audit and, uh, four, you say it's four-star?
That's the highest it goes.
As high as it goes for, for public records and, and transparency. That's fantastic. Thank you. All right. Um, now we can go to the standing committee reports. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you call those?
Certainly. Finance committee, please.
Finance committee met, as we all know, on November twenty-first. Thanks, everyone. It was a three-hour and twelve-minute meeting, so glad we knocked that down in one instead of coming back Monday. So, um, we reviewed the tw- the twenty-five proposed, twenty-twenty-five proposed general fund budget, the VPGI fund budget, and the special revenues fund budget, and there'll be further discussion like, tonight with the ordinance forty-eight. A quick overview, we project about three-point-one-five million next year, twenty-twenty-five revenues. That does not include the interest income from the bond ladder and the investments. Uh, we project roughly a four-point-nine-seven, call it five percent, spending increase next year. And that, as, that compares to the original twenty-twenty-four budget, not the revised one through the past year. And so this means that there will be about three-point-two-three million in spending for the, from the general fund, which would mean an approximate eighty-three thousand dollar deficit for next year. If we do, I know, David, we've talked about this, but if we do receive some of the holdback, like we have in years past, that could add sixty grand. So then the eighty-three thousand deficit would be twenty-three thousand, so we'll hope for that again. Uh, regarding the capital and equipment from the general fund, we budgeted about forty grand in the general fund for twenty-twenty-five. And within the VPGI fund, we've budgeted about three-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars in capital spending. And as we discussed, that would be street paving and resurfacing, a new truck and mower for, a new pickup truck and mower for the public works department, some gas light replacements, and a new leaf collection vehicle. So, we covered a lot, and we'll talk about it some more when we get to ordinance forty-eight.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Fire committee, please.
Fire committee met on November seventh, essentially to, um, go through the budget, budget twenty-twenty-five. And, um, the minutes are posted on the village website, and I will turn it over to Assistant Chief Lerman.
Thank you. Uh, just to give everyone on counsel an update on Chief Yetter, uh, his surgery went well, and he's doing fine. Uh, he's really eager to come back to work, so, uh, as long as he's healing up and he's able to come back, we would love to have him back as soon as he can come back with us. So, um, in his absence, I prepared the monthly report and sent that out to you just a little bit ago, so if you have any questions on that, uh, just shoot it my way. I'd be happy to answer them for you. As the mayor mentioned, the pancake breakfast was in November. Um, we calculated about seven hundred residents, uh, were guests through the doors that day.
That's considerably more than we've had in the past.
Yeah. It's, um, for, as long as our records that we have, it's about six hundred, six, six and a quarter. So, with all the kids that, uh, from Quinn's class that also came and her friends, um, you know, we calculate about seven hundred. So, it was, um, a very good attended event. Uh, there's always things we can improve on, so we will make sure that, uh, we give those special attention for next year. And, uh, thanks to all the residents that came and supported us, and then thanks to all the helpers that we had for that day. So, Mayor, I'll get with you on your schedule for, uh, next year to make sure you're at, next year. So, we'll work around here, sir.
That's my fault. It's hard to work around my schedule.
No problem, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And then, uh, lastly here, uh, the fire department will be participating in Christmas in the square. Uh, as always, we will be bringing Santa down in the fire truck. Uh, we're also going to be serving some, uh, Skyline chili dogs and some nautilus and cheese for the kids, so, uh, please stop by our booth and love to give you a hot dog or a cheese cookie, so.
Sounds great.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks.
Thank you. Laws and Claims, please.
Thank you. Laws and Claims did not meet in November. We are meeting this Thursday, the fifth, uh, four o'clock to discuss, uh, again, the proposed, uh, chicken, uh, ordinance, uh, revisions and, um, uh, the, um,
Parking.
Oh, the parking, thank you. It's a joint meeting, uh, with Streets Committee, uh, and the, uh, parking situation, as well as our Facebook policy, and also just looking ahead a little bit to, in the short, uh, term, what we'll be looking at coming up is, um, uh, pods, trailers, construction dumpsters, and temporary garages, and how our, uh, current ordinance addresses, uh, those and, uh, in response to resident input and feedback about those, um, containers and, um, how we, uh, can best either improve our ordinances or, um, other ways we can address them. So, other than that, um, we'll be here on the fifth.
That's in here, Joan?
It's, yeah.
Okay.
We're still having, yeah, here.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, please.
We did not meet this month.
That's easy. A Police Committee, please.
Police did not meet in November, so I'm happy to have Sergeant Barber here. Take it away.
Thank you. Uh, on behalf of Chief Walsh, I'm Sergeant Barber. Uh, you guys, thanks for having me. I'll publicly recognize Officer Davison and Officer Bishop. They, uh, received awards for Officer of the Month for the past few months for, uh, above and beyond performance in their duties. Um, during the past month, we did Thanksgiving pass out with, uh, the Presbyterian Church. We were able to pass out over twenty boxes, uh, to different residents that contained gift card and also food items. Um, we will be doing the Shop with a Hero event on November thirteenth. Uh, we'll be taking twenty-five kids from Glendale Elementary, uh, to shop and, uh, provide them dinner that, that evening. Uh, with the holidays coming up, I wanted to just advise everyone that, uh, keep your valuables, um, out of sight in your vehicles. Keep your vehicles locked. That's where most of thefts occur, and then mainly all occur, uh, when the vehicles are left unlocked, and there's no one really smashing windows. They're just checking locks. In an effort to continue de-escalation at the police department, uh, we, I completed a pepperball instructor course last week, and today, uh, five of us completed a Taser ten instructor course. That's a new taser, uh, that we got, and we're all, um, certified instructors, and we'll be training the rest of the officers to use it. In regards to the twenty-five-seventy-three lost to theft, um, that's from a scam. It was Facebook. A local resident had their Facebook hacked, and the hacker set up an estate sale, uh, and then a resident from Fairfield, I believe, uh, made contact with the hacked account, uh, and paid them twenty-five-hundred bucks as a deposit on an item, a vehicle. Uh, I had made contact with the resident whose Facebook was hacked that we didn't know at the time, and, uh, it was, in fact, hacked. Uh, so the gentleman that was at, from Fairfield was out the twenty-five-seventy-three.
Too bad.
And so we have, year-to-date?
Uh, year-to-date, a hundred-and-thirty-four thousand nine-hundred-and-two, which the majority of that would be from scams.
Are those telephone scams or internet scams?
Yeah, a lot of it's, uh, telephone, Facebook, internet. Uh, we see all sorts. Uh, I'd say probably the most, most seen is probably, people will call, uh, call you and act as your relative that's in trouble, out of state, needing help, uh, hospital bill, lawyer bill, uh, gotten a wreck, OVI, need so much money sent before they can be released from the jail, and, uh, sending thousands of dollars.
So, if something sounds strange, just, uh, think about it a little bit?
Disregard it. Give us a call. We can come over and let you know if we've heard of it, what we think of it.
Good.
Good.
Go that route.
Okay.
Maybe worth looking at doing another, um, public education session of some sort.
Or certainly something in the newsletter.
Something in the newsletter or, or even a, a gathering for some of the targeted, you know, older population that would most benefit.
Yeah, that's something we can try to set up.
Yeah.
Try to do that. And when did you say we shop with a hero?
Uh, that'll be on December thirteenth.
December thirteenth. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Buildings and Historic Preservation, please.
Hi, we met on November twelfth, and we met at the village office so that we could all immerse ourselves in the destruction. Um, we went over the, um, latest round of renovations, discussed the budget and the insurance amount, and then we discussed our finance budget as a whole. And I'm sure we'll hear more, uh, hear more about it from David, so, thank you.
Thank you. Streets, Public Improvements and Lights.
Yes, as Joan mentioned, um, we'll be meeting on Thursday along with Laws and Claims Committee, um, tackle a few subjects, but we did not meet this past week.
Thank you. Utilities, please.
Uh, the Utilities Committee did meet last week with the purpose of revisiting the budget that had previously been approved in the October twenty-eighth meeting. Um, we had further discussion about it, and after that, uh, no changes were made. Uh, and it was submitted for approval to the council, as we will hear later. It will be on one of the ordinances. Uh, we also pointed out that in about thirty days, our residents are going to receive their first utilities bill under the new rates. And, uh, when there are necessary increases like this, we get frequent inquiries from residents about why we don't use Cincinnati Water. So, in response to that and to prepare for that, the committee in October requested that the administrator, David, uh, contact the, uh, Cincinnati Water Works to determine whether or not it still made sense for us to continue or for to consider using, uh, Greater Cincinnati Water Works. Um, we are waiting for, uh, data on that, and we will discuss that in another meeting. And we'll try again in December to meet before, fix it in between Christmas and New Year.
For you, Cooper.
I, I will be the only attendant. And that's the report. Thank you.
Okay, and, uh, next up then is the Treasures Report.
I, uh, sent our, um, report for November. Looks pretty good. Um, in anticipation for the end of the year, it looks like we'll probably hit about three-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars in total investment, uh, plus or minus a couple of thousand dollars. So, probably the all-time highs that we've had since I've been in this role. Uh, but it's all down here, from here. So, next year, probably be three-hundred thousand or less, but, uh, so, it's declining returns, so. But, so far, so good.
So far, so good.
Do you have any questions? Let me know.
Okay. And then, uh, does the clerk have a report this week?
I do. Um, so, as David mentioned, the audit is completed. We all attended the meeting on the twenty-third, I think was the date, um, with the state auditor, and, um, they reported, uh, no material and no reportable issues were found during our, um, during our audit, uh, which is a great finding, um, based on, in fiscal year nineteen twenty, we had two, uh, reportable findings, uh, ten findings in the management letter in Fiscals twenty-one, twenty-two. There were two findings that year and four items in the management letter. And then for this one, fiscal year twenty-three, there were no findings and only three items for the management letter. So, um, the public documents have not been released by the state auditor yet, but as soon as they are, we will publish them out, hoping this week. The holiday kind of like slows everything down, so maybe next week. So, but we're anticipating seeing that shortly.
Very good.
Well done. Nice.
Congratulations on that audit again. Okay, moving on to, uh, new business. We have, uh, ordinance number twenty-twenty-four dash forty-seven, an ordinance authorizing amendment of the twenty-twenty-four appropriations of the general fund and declaring an emergency. Uh, David, can you give us some background?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So, uh, this eleven thousand dollar increase addresses, uh, both of the incidents of water damage in the village office. The first is the, um, damage that occurred in August, which was mainly the lower level near the restrooms. Um, originally, the public buildings, well, council had a special meeting in the building and approved a sixty-five thousand dollar appropriation. Uh, the final insurance number came out to si- a little over sixty-eight. So, we have, um, three thousand extra that we do need to appropriate that is being paid by insurance to cover the costs of the remediation and, and repair of the office. Um, as we discussed in public buildings, we're anticipating an insurance payout of a little over forty thousand towards the improvements, um, or the rebuild of the office, and we believe that we're going to be able to do the rearranging that we're looking for with, well within that number. So, we're proceeding with that work. Um, the second is the, is eight thousand. The second part of this eleven is eight thousand, which is the current known minimum amount for repairs on the second incident of water damage. It's about four thousand for the cleanup and about four thousand for the roof drain repair. We had a leaking roof drain that, um, came through the drywall and was running down the wall along the side of the upstairs conference room. So, um, that will also need to include in the future a reconstruction quote, but we don't have that number quite yet. But for right now, that 8,000 will get those two bills properly accounted for. That will be recovered through insurance as well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
When was the second leak?
Shortly.
Very shortly after. I want to say it was in October. Our exterminator saw water running off the bottom of the floor, or between the wall and the floor. And, yeah, so.
And there are two roof drains up there, and I think you're getting them both fixed, right?
We're going to get them both fixed. Insurance is going to do both as a preventative measure.
Right, one's not a problem yet, but the other one was leaking.
Yeah, so.
Okay. So is there a motion for this ordinance?
So moved. Second.
And a motion to dispense with three reads.
So moved. Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you call the rule, please?
For ordinance 2024-47, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Ms. Fleury.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
For ordinance 2024-47, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Ms. Fleury.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
The ordinance passes, then the next is ordinance 2024-48. An ordinance adopting the 2025 appropriations of the general fund, special revenue funds, village plan, and general improvement fund and enterprise funds, providing wage adjustments and declaring an emergency. I will make a few comments about this first and let David add on if he wishes. As Mr. Kreidler already reported in the Finance Committee report, there's roughly an $80,000 deficit projected in the current budget. It's a fairly conservative budget. If we do collect all of the holdback portion of the taxes, which the auditor holds back, because typically there's a certain percentage that doesn't get paid, we'll probably end up with about a $20,000 deficit. Also, if we're able to find some expense reductions through the year, or if we don't use all the money that's been allocated, and that's happened before, we'll also be able to trim that deficit a little bit. I think it'll be kind of incumbent upon us to try to do as much of that budget trimming as we can, as we go. And I know the way we're set up now, is we do set the budget up for what we feel is a fairly conservative and for what we think we will need. That entire budget does not get used. If we don't need that money, we don't use it. It's not a situation where, oh, I have leftover money in my budget now, I'm going to spend it. No, we don't, we don't do that, so. And we typically end better than what we project, so we're hopeful. Anything else you want to add to that, David, or Will, and then any other questions or comments?
I don't think so.
Just one thing, you can see that the 2% increase for the employees, you can see that's very, I'd say that's very fair on everyone's side, employees and council side, but also the insurance, the insurance is really going up the last-
Insurance went way up. Both property insurance and health insurance were-
So that's just really been a tough bill.
Large increases, yeah. That's a tough slog.
Yeah.
We also added throughout 2024 some additional equipment for the police to use, which increased that budget, but then also layers on top again in 2025. And so far, that equipment is working well, we think. Okay, so is there a motion for ordinance 2024-48?
So moved.
Second.
And is there a motion to dispense with three reads?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please call the rule?
For ordinance 2024-48, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Ms. Fleury.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
For ordinance 2024-48, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Ms. Fleury.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
So that ordinance passes, thank you. Next is ordinance 2024-49. An ordinance authorizing the village administrator to enter into an agreement with the City of Sharonville for emergency medical services for 2025 and declaring an emergency. David, can you give us the background here?
Certainly, thank you, Mayor. This agreement is essentially identical to what the village has been operating under with Sharonville. Last year, or rather, in 2024, we did exercise the automatic one-year renewal at no increase. The same provision exists in this agreement, so hopefully for 2026, we will be able to exercise that. We'll see. But this continues EMS services through Sharonville and the increased rate that was discussed at Fire Committee meeting and Finance Committee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So is there a motion for this ordinance?
So moved. Second.
And a motion to dispense with three reads.
So moved. Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you call the rule, please?
For ordinance 2024-49, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Ms. Fleury.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
For ordinance 2024-49, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Ms. Fleury.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and that ordinance passes, thank you. The last item is just to review the 2025 meeting schedule that was circulated in your packet. Does anybody have any questions or conflicts about any of the dates? They're typically first Monday unless that's a holiday, and so some of those have to adjust. I know Kathy, you won't be around for one of those.
September.
September, all right.
I won't be there for February.
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor, I know I'm out March 3rd.
March 3rd, all right. That's our, that would be the typical day, okay? And then you said-
30th of February.
February 3? All right, so in that circumstance, yeah.
And Mayor, I will not be available the 7th of April.
The 7th, okay. So there's three. Is it typical to try to find another date, David, or do we just go ahead with it?
I think we just go ahead and move forward.
Okay, I agree.
Yeah.
As long as there's a quorum, three or four people at the same time.
I agree. As soon as, yeah, as soon as we try to pick another date, someone will not be able to attend. Okay, great, so we have that set. There were financial reports circulated for the month of October. Is there acknowledgement of receipt of these documents? Say aye.
Aye.
So we have the, the November report will be out Friday or Monday?
I'm hoping end of this week.
Okay, that'd be great. All right, and with that, is there any other business?
It's a record. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.